I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is Bellfield PUD Phase 2A.
Motion to reopen public hearing?
Yes, motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for inviting me up again. We were here two weeks ago and just by way of update, we submitted plans, I believe it was Monday, right? Monday, and so we addressed final planning comments and engineering comments. I did have a chance to review the resolution, few comments on that, but we also had some lighting and landscape comments that we addressed on those new plan sets, on the lighting. The county planning asked that we do a photo sim on the entry barn, so we modeled the lights that are inside the entry barn because there's windows all the way around it, and so we show the foot candles outside, but I do see and hear you're limiting the foot candles, you know, so as a condition, so I get that. Also by way of update, the stone tower which is in our 2A, access up there is very difficult because of, you know, the steepness of grade, so we resubmitted the, what we're going to resubmit for the building permit, eliminating the stair tower and the glass railing that went around it. Our main push right now is to get the windows and the doors in, so when the hotel opens, they're not looking at, you know, aborted windows, that kind of thing. Then when we get the roads in for 2A, you know, then we'll go up in there and finish On the conditions, and I went through them, there's a couple of things. The entry barn that we have there, the way the grades are working out for that entry barn, it sits below the wall, so, and then, and it's already high, so it's high, the wall is here, and the road's down here, so when you drive by, you're not seeing into it. So I don't know exactly how it's going to work, so I wanted the option to break the wall for visibility when you're driving on 9. You see these walls, or I see them all over the place where they kind of break, you know, for a drive or something like that, so it won't look unnatural to break it, but that's why I have that note in there. There's a comment, the number 16.
The board, I'm not sure if it was a late day, if everyone had a chance to look at the resolution yet.
So that's number 16?
Number 16.
Yeah, because we didn't discuss it, I recall being presented, about the stone wall being broken, and so because it wasn't discussed, we were going to discuss it tonight with you, saying, you know, this was something that came up that wasn't discussed, you want to take it out?
Yeah, yeah, no, just to break it so that when the road's down here, this, you know, you'll have the sight line in. Tom wants to raise the, you know, building above the wall, I think we need to have somewhere in between that, so I didn't know exactly where it would land, so I put the note in there to say if necessary, break the wall, you know, for visual.
Is it to see the barn or to see the sign on the barn?
To see, to see the barn, to see into, you know, the, so we got a 1941 International, no, Farmall, Farmall tractor and pickup truck that, you know, we're trying to showcase. So that's why.
Right, but we generally are supposed to be preserving the stone walls in Hyde Park. We generally require everyone to maintain them, not to take them down, so it's contrary to past practice of the board, I mean, it's open for discussion, it's just.
I'm just trying to remember, did you redo the stone walls in front?
We built it.
But you redid all those, right?
Yeah, no, no, we didn't redo, we built it, there was nothing there.
So you built the wall, now you want to just put a break in it?
Yeah, a break, a sight line, visual break.
Or the option to.
The option to, when we build it, and then, you know, we'll see how it looks in a moment.
So it didn't exist?
It did not exist, we built it, yeah.
Larry, is it an option for you, if granted permission and you break the wall, to use that stone and extend it further down?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
So the break in the wall is going to be as if it was a utility truck going on a farm and down the fields, you know, like a tractor?
Exactly, it wouldn't look, you know, out of place.
So you're going to finish the corners and all that, and it'll be nice?
Yeah, well, they'll be similar to what's already out there, there's no, you know, it's finished, has a finished look, similar to what's all around town.
I mean, another option is you can come back in and present to the board, you can do it separately.
And actually, I'm just, I'm thinking, what part of the wall, because in my mind, I'm thinking Route 9, but maybe you're talking about a different part of the wall?
No, no, Route 9.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, you're Route 9, again.
I drive by there all the time, my brain, I'm like.
How tall is it now, Larry?
Thirty-two inches.
It's 32 inches.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't make, you can't really, there's not much to suppress it, to bring it down to 18 inches.
Well, that was one of the options, you know.
Bring it down to 18 and have it as a sitting wall.
You could break it down to 18, we could do that, it would look kind of.
I think that would actually look more weird.
Awkward, yeah, that's what I think.
That's what we decided, it would look, you know.
If it was a four-foot wall or something, I could see it, but.
Right, it would look odd, so, again, it was the option to break, I'm not saying we're going to do it.
And how wide would you be looking, potentially?
The width of the, about 25 feet.
Oh, the width of the building?
Yeah, yeah, width of the building, 25 feet.
Do you have to be driving by kind of and look over as you're driving by?
Yes, yes.
Well, the passenger could.
Yes.
Out of curiosity, how far is the building off the stone wall?
About 20 feet, or 10 feet.
Just trying to get a frame.
Yeah, 10 feet.
And the grade doesn't change that, it's not.
Not both down.
Yeah, that's why we're raising the building, yeah.
Victoria, would it be possible to change the language for 16, to give the option for a wall break upon future approval, because we can't approve something that is not defined, but the fact that that option is open as long as we approve it, when they figure out what they're going to do?
Right, so when we say approved, do we mean like approve of the public hearing, referral to county planning, the whole process, or is this just going back to Tad and Pete?
No, just to come back to Tad and Pete to make sure it's.
Like a sketch or something?
Yeah.
I mean, Larry, can you, you're going to build the building, can you build the building and then do the break?
We're going to build the building first.
Yes.
Okay, maybe just to come back to you after the building's built.
That's what I'm saying, once they figure out where it.
Like, does it make sense, and does it, you know?
Yeah.
Because you might be able to put something inside the building and put the tractor on it that people then go, oh, look, the tractor's in there.
It's not obvious to us right now, so be respectful to look at it.
I don't think it's obvious to them either, that's why I'm saying.
It would be site requirement, as pending towards site requirement, necessary.
Right, so this is, this would be a town, like a Tad and Pete thing? Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, simple sketch, I think.
Well, I mean, we can circulate it by email to members of the planning board, I mean, you know.
And usually, usually someone weighs in on whether it's de minimis or not?
Yeah.
Maybe as a condition, the optional stone wall break will be approved, subject to planning board review beforehand, or something like that. I think you just want it to come back so you could see what they're talking about.
So the references are already there, right?
It's really a field, it's a field decision.
Yeah, it's a field.
Well, it's not a field decision, it's a site plan decision, but I think we can word it so that the applicant may request a waiver for the site plan.
Ah, that I like.
You took the words.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, so then this way.
So it's going to be a note on the plan, I'm going to word it right now.
Thank you.
It sounds like Larry has other things to talk about, and then we'll come back to it.
Okay.
Do you have anything else to?
Yeah, just a few more things, the, I just received all the easements this afternoon on the plat, so I'll be getting them over to everybody to review. Lynn Whining, the transactional attorney, has the declaration of easements to get to me, and then we'll bundle them all up and get them to the town. We got the DOH comments, and we're submitting them the end of the week, so we'll have that wrapped up.
Were there any other questions on the conditions?
Oh, I just got them. I think, I do understand the questions regarding the generator, that's fine.
Well, those were in my last comment letter, and again, there wasn't like a cover letter with what came in, you know, like on Monday, and I was hoping, what I was hoping to do was just kind of breeze through, you know, a response letter rather than have to.
Understood, understood.
So we just had Victoria relist all the comments in my memo, some of them probably were like addressed, so we'll just go check them off as we go.
Totally get it.
And then I added the one about the extension of the road beyond, you know, the roundabout, the way that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
The way Chris had it, it was very tight, you know, and again, I understand it hasn't been like designed or anything, but we should just, because if, he should probably look at it a little bit and see if the, you know, the roundabout had to be shifted a little bit to the north, you know, like kinked a little bit, I don't know.
No, I agree with your comment.
Because I think there's going to be a sidewalk running up that side.
Yeah, that was the note, the comment you made, and that made sense, because the way it's set up now is.
We'll work it out amongst ourselves.
Yeah, the sidewalk could be in the setback, so I get that. The three, up to three light poles may be eliminated from the area south of the townhouses, what's that?
That's just to give you flexibility, because when we were looking at the plans, it looked like there were some brighter spots that might not be necessary.
Okay.
So if you wanted to reduce the amount of lights in the back, you could.
Are you referring to?
Behind the garages, the light poles.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
That was more optional for you, if you didn't need them.
The trees are staggered right now in the current plan set?
Yeah, again, like a lot of these may have already been addressed, just didn't have, didn't have a lot of time to.
I'm all set. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bonnie, any other comments?
No, they were incorporated into the resolution, so we're good.
Okay, thank you. Pete, anything else to add?
Same thing.
Very good. Victoria?
Just that the board should take a few minutes and review all of the conditions. It looks like a lot, but a lot of them may have been addressed, there's just not enough time between Monday and today to sort that all out.
Fair enough.
You know, it's been referred to county planning, seeker's completed. I do have an updated condition 16, which I can read.
Okay.
It would say revision of the site plan set to add a note on sheet C131 as follows.
Revision of site plan set.
As follows.
Uh, okay.
To add a note.
To add a note, to add a note.
On sheet C131?
As follows, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I can just reprint this, too.
Of course.
The applicant may apply for a site plan waiver for an optional break.
For a?
For an optional break in the stone wall.
Yep.
In the vicinity of the signed barn, parentheses, building 1800. And then it says, the stone wall shall remain intact unless a site plan waiver is granted. So, you know, they'll have to come back and present it, but it won't, it won't be a full application.
So the stone wall shall remain intact?
Intact unless a site plan waiver is granted.
Do you need to say?
I think that's.
We'll circulate.
Larry, how's that sound?
Yeah, sounds good. Good. That's all?
Mm-hmm.
I'll start to my left, Mr. Waters, any comments?
No.
No?
No comments.
Very good. I'm sorry, I forgot, Ms. Moss in the back? No?
Bye, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Dexter?
No, no, no comments.
Mr. Garcia?
No comment.
Okay, I'll just have, I just have one comment here, or question regarding the Roosevelt Fire Department comments.
Yes.
You were able to communicate with Dan, I take it?
Yes, so called him, and he said we're missing one dimension on the plan, he attached all the other comments that he's expecting will be addressed as we come in with the construction phase.
And so if you look at condition eight, it does require them to now include the dimensions of the roundabout?
Yep.
Very good. So I can close.
I'll find out if there's any public.
Is there any, anyone from the public here to speak about this application? No one here, I would like a motion to close, or are we going to close, or are we?
Close.
We'll close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And I have this.
Thank you very much, Ann.
Resolution to grant site plan approval to Bellfield Final Development Plan Phase 2, resolution number 2022-44A, whereas, be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan set and authorize the chair or is authorized designated to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of the site plan set to include the endangered and threatened species notes as attached heretofore. Three, revision of the site plan set to include the sidewalk and platform materials around the water tower on sheet C131. Four, revision of note RE logging trail on sheet C131 to state that such trail shall be maintained by applicant in passable condition. Five, revision of the site plan set to include the following note on sheet C181, in the applicant's discretion, up to three light poles may be eliminated from the area south of the townhouses. Six, revision of the site plan set to include a note on sheet C181 stating that the overall lighting shall not exceed an average of five foot candles. Seven, revision of the site plan set to stagger the row of trees southeast of the townhomes. Eight, revision of the site plan set to include the dimensions of the roundabout to implement a truck apron in the center and narrow the pavement width around the circle to discourage vehicles from driving the wrong way through it, and to include mountable curbs for emergency vehicles. Nine, coordinate with the town engineer and zoning administrator on the location of the future road extension beyond the roundabout, and revision of site plan set to relocate roundabout in the north direction to ensure that there is no encroachment in the buffer, taking into account sidewalks and grading as required by the town engineer and zoning administrator. Ten, approval of final plat by the planning board and all required easements pursuant to planning board resolution 2022-28C dated October 4, 2023, and proof of filing of such approved final plat and recordation of such easements with the Duchess County Clerk. Eleven, revision of the site plan set sheet C120 to designate material storage area and contractor parking area for Phase 2A. The area noted on C120 is the existing Bellfield trailer and parking area. If this area will be used for contractor parking and material storage for Phase 2A, please note it and reference the area as existing Bellfield trailer area. If this area will not be used for material storage and parking for the townhomes, designate another area to be approved by the zoning administrator and town engineer. Twelve, revision of the site plan set sheet C130 as follows. A, add pedestrian crosswalk signs at the crosswalk. B, addition of landscaping around the generators to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator and town engineer. C, addition of a note indicating that sound attenuation will be provided on the generators, and that the generator will be exercised during the midday, midweek time period. D, clarify how generators will feed individual units. Thirteen, revision of the site plan set sheet C131 as follows. A, include typical road sections for Farmhouse Road. B, clarify whether a stone-faced retaining wall is located adjacent to Carriageway, or whether such area will be sloped, and provide details for review and approval by the town engineer. Fourteen, revision of the site plan set sheet C142 to correct all sidewalk and stair elevations so that they comply with standards of the New York State Building Code. Fifteen, revision of the site plan set sheet C150 to use bold lines for the limits of disturbance for legibility. Sixteen, revision of site plan set sheet C131 as follows. The applicant may apply for a site plan waiver for an optional break in the stone wall in the vicinity, in the vicinity of the signed barn, building 1800. The stone wall shall remain intact unless site plan waiver is granted.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, Larry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing everybody out there, December 15th, 16th, hotel's opening.
Woo!
Very exciting.
Nice.
There you go.
We're getting close, thank you.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, next item on the agenda would be Carriage Trails, AKA Crofton Muse.
Good evening, everyone. If there's no one here from the public, could I switch Jeffrey Groves Estates with Carriage Trail, because I have my engineer here on it, Jeffrey Groves.
Well, let's just, I mean, I don't think we have much to talk about, we already, we just opened it, so procedure.
I have to open public hearing?
Oh, we thought we opened.
Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
Hi, Louis Kaufman for, this is Carriage Trail now, right?
Correct.
So, here, in a request for the board to revise its findings, to indicate that the current plan, which I provided, you know, project assessment on, is incorporated within the original findings, but with the revisions that Ms. Franson has provided to the board, I wanted to know if, what issues the board was concerned with. I believe one of them was the DOT approval. I had reviewed the finding statement, the original finding statement, I found that, I found the findings, had, had a more general statement about the left turn lane on Route 9G, that's still going to exist. The bigger picture is, is that they're really, how we get there is going to be worked out with DOT. There were three possibilities, I could run through them, but essentially, the third one is the one where the DOT, which indicated that would do this, gives us minimal lanes and shoulders, which had, which had done, you know, throughout other areas, which would be two, two-foot shoulder, 10-foot lanes, that comes out to a 34-feet width, that's actually two feet less than the current roadway, so I could actually give the neighbor some more land. The other ways, we've taken a little bit more, but the most important part of that is we don't disturb the bank on the southbound lane, which would cause a great deal of problems environmentally. I would probably have to revisit the turtle protections, which I'm now in place, they're going to have a glorious land for themselves, they have a Playboy mansion, there's a little clubhouse for them, we're going to have.
Little swim-up bar?
Yeah, they're going to, right, swim-up bar. They're going to have, you know, and they want it, I need to inspect it for 20 years, and I've yet to find a turtle there, but that's okay, they're cute little things, and it worked out better because unfortunately, there's more wetlands, so they get more place to play. So that's fine, but I mean, I've resolved that, we're working through the approvals yet again that we originally had with DEC, as I said, DOT, it appears that we're going to comply even with the original findings, which is giving them a left turn lane. The only significant change, if you consider it significant, is that they're coming out of the project, it's not going to have two lanes, one going to the south and one going north, DOT only wants one lane. I don't think it's really an issue, but of course, I would say that, right? So I'm thinking that we're close, if not there, to getting a revised findings, which would allow me to go back to DC and check another box. They want to know that you guys, that your original findings are, encompasses what the new plan is, and the new plan is smaller, so, I don't know, I think it's done, but that is where I'm at with that.
Thank you. Ms. Franson, any comments?
So at this point, you've had a draft amended finding statement in front of you, you had received various communications from DEC and DOT trying to address what the final mitigations or changes in mitigations would be, they asked for certain pieces of information, one of them was the HECC RAS, which I believe Pat and Pete are to review, so it's really a matter of status of whether those are sufficient to then move forward on the amended finding statement.
Thank you. Mr. Sotero?
The only thing I'll say is that, I mean, I have to think about it a little bit, but I don't think we need to nail down completely the HECC RAS, because in order for us to do a seeker findings, the floodplain can't be impacted, so the HECC RAS, if we have some comments on it, they're going to have to make like adjustments either in the size, the size of the opening for the bridge, to make sure that there's no significant change in the floodplain or downstream like impact, so I got to think about that one like a little bit, but I mean, I don't think we need to get through the complete review of the HECC like RAS in order to get the seeker. I got, I'd have to talk to Bonnie and Victoria, you know, and Tad a little bit more on that, but that's all I have, that's all I have at this point.
Thank you.
Let me just address that for a minute, in my review of the HECC RAS, obviously an amateurish review, it does indicate that there's no negative impacts with removal of the culvert bridges and installation of the new bridge, the Span Bridge, and there's no problem downstream or at the, you know, at the bridge itself. That's something that Mr. Sotero and his people at the CPL need to confirm, but that is the findings in the HECC RAS, so I don't think he will find that to be problematic, I don't know that any adjustments need to be made, but that's something that he needs to.
Yeah, I'm just like saying that, I mean, you know, it may not.
Yeah, right, so, you know, just, I think, after he's had an opportunity to drill down on it, I think he'll be satisfied with that, and we are, Tad and Pete, my engineer and I, we're going to work toward a floodplain permit now. You know, flood plain permit is always issuable, it's just based on what we're putting in the ground, so.
Correct. Ms. Polidoro?
Of those, the turning paths you were talking about earlier, do you have a drawing showing the final one that you decided on?
I'm sorry, the DOT, okay, I actually have this itty-bitty thing on my, she sent it tonight, I looked at it, it's not really, you know, heavily visible, I'm going to have something I can send you, and we're going to set that up, but it's essentially this, you know, the Route 9G exists where it exists, if we maintain the edge of pavement, pavement on the western side, on the southbound lane, and we expand it easterly toward the neighbor across the street to allow for a left turn lane, but we have small. lane, but we have small shoulders and minimal lanes, all that are permitted by DOT, whether they'll permit it here is the question, then we will actually have a smaller footprint for 9G in our neighborhood. It would also benefit us because there's a rock ledge south on the northbound lane, but south of that, that would have to get torn up and, you know, so that would also benefit by the smaller roadway.
Right. So, for purposes of updating the seeker, some kind of comparison between what we reviewed last time and what we're reviewing now and showing that, you know, you're not touching some land that wasn't looked at before.
I can, I can provide that to you, you know, I can show you the plan. This finding is not that specific, as I read through it. I was wondering about it, because I've been warned that, you know, they, you know, we have to get closer to what DOT is going to do. But, if you were to read it with the idea that is this new plan really just a minor variation of the old one, which I think you'll find, but I'll try and illuminate that a little bit better.
Yeah, I heard you explain it, but I didn't see it.
Got it.
Thank you. Ms. Moss, any comments?
No, Pete and I are going to get together and work on the floodplain development.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll start to my left, Mr. Waters, any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Ms. Dexter, any comments?
No, but the, I mean, my only comment is that just all the tech, the highly technical details all come out on this project. It's everything, right? It's everything.
Warts and all.
Yeah, yeah. Usually projects have like one.
See, but I speak your language. I try to simplify it.
Anyway, I, for this, I heavily depend on the consultants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gercio?
No comments.
No comments. So, my only comments are, again, I would rely heavily on our consultants as well, and I hope we're almost there for you. I know it's been a journey, and, you know, dealing with all the different agencies and who, you know, who goes first, what comes first, the chicken or the egg, I get it. So, with that said, I don't have anything else to add. Is there anyone from the public that has anything to add about this? Come on up and state your name.
Lou, if you could get your seat up and.
Just make sure you speak into the microphone.
Hi, Francine White. I live just north on 9G in the development. I have a big concern about cars taking a left-hand turn out of this development without a light, mainly because I have to turn out of my drive, my ride, my road to go south on 9G, and it's horrendous to try to pull out of there. And I can only imagine with this many cars coming out of this development and turning north, nobody goes to speed limit on that road right there, and you're looking at, there's going to be accidents. And I just want to go on record just saying I'm afraid about what's going to happen there. I was one of the people that was instrumental in getting a light up at FDR High School. The DOT did not want to have anything to do with that. They said there wasn't enough traffic until someone got killed, and then we got a light. So, I'm really concerned about that. I'm also concerned about what type of apartments are going in here. I tried to do some research back twelve years ago to try to figure out what this was all about, because the development, you know, we really, across the street, thought this was done. It's been dragging on forever and ever, and now all of a sudden, it pops up again, which is fine, but what type of apartments are going in here? Are they one, two, or three-bedroom apartments? And now, how is this going to impact the school districts? Because the schools have changed a lot in twelve years. And also, what the target demographics are for these apartments? Are they going to be high-end apartments, or are they going to be government apartments? Or what exactly is going in there? Thank you.
Thank you.
Where do you live, ma'am, in Green Tree? Do you live in Green Tree?
No, I live in Duchess Estates.
Duchess Estates.
Which is right behind the dance studio.
Yeah, no, yeah, no worries.
Thank you.
So, you also have the traffic from that dance studio now, too, that plays, it's very close to this.
Should I address any of that?
Yes, you're more than welcome to.
Well, it's interesting that she lives in Duchess Estates, because Duchess Estates has a failing water system, and we or Duchess County wants us to bring the water, we'd only need the water up to basically where the Moose Lodge driveway is, because we only need it up to the sewer treatment plant, which is on the reverse side of Crofton Boulevard, the new road. Duchess County wanted us, wants us to bring it up past the bridge and stub it at Route 9G, with the primary beneficiary to be Duchess Estates, and the secondary beneficiary to be Hyde Park, because it would open up development, at least for water. And so, Duchess County, again, Duchess County's all for it. Duchess County water and wastewater, not so much, because there was an original agreement where they were going to, you know, based on their, on the income they would make from our project, they were going to reimburse us for the line that we don't need. They're balking at that, so I'm going to let the county work that out, but I think to some degree Duchess Estates would benefit by the project. Secondly, I can't speak, you know, our traffic engineers says that they don't think a left-turn lane is even needed. They didn't think that the traffic count would warrant that. We could put in, you know, the two lanes coming out, I don't know how that benefits it, you know, out of Crofton Boulevard, but she's right when she says DOT is very finicky about things that they want there. So.
Well, the DOT ultimately has, you know, the say, and, you know, like, I know that, you know, there's, there's certainly ways to try and persuade them, but, you know, I think we have to let this, as far as the traffic, let this play out a little bit.
Right.
As you, as you like develop, or you figure out which, like, concept for widening that you're going to go with, and then, as we've had, as we've had in the past, we have had meetings with the DOT, and we can bring up, you know, the ladies', you know, concern there.
Right. Yeah, of course, our, you know, desire is to have the third option, which is minimal lane size, because our traffic consultant says you don't really need a left-turn lane. So, from my perspective, that just gives a little more room there, you know, while being a good neighbor and not, and giving backland to that guy across the street, as opposed to maybe expanding Route 9G, still within the right-of-way, but taking up a little more of his lawn, you know, because it's in the right-of-way. So, we're, we're going to try and promote that third concept. But, all of those concepts are, can be envisioned in your findings. So, I don't, you know, I don't think that the ultimate issue that DOT wants, what it wants, should affect your findings, especially in light of the fact that under the old approvals that DOT was okay with, the roadway is going to be forty-eight feet, which is well beyond any of the concepts we have in front of them today. So, if that was the old way, any one of the new ways is less impactful. So, I'm thinking, and I'm going to leave that to your planner and everybody else, that shouldn't trip us up, the DOT, that your original findings encompass what we're offering today. So, that. So, if there's something else that I need to address or put more in place, I'd like to know that, because I think we're very close to, you know, now, if I can get you to check the box about what the findings will be, or if the findings encompass this, turtles are in place, the bridge is in place, DOT, DEC is very pregnant right now and is ready to give birth. So, I'm, I would, you know, so, but I need to get Hyde Park to state out loud that they're good with the new plan.
Well, I think to, you know, all that stuff on the findings is fine, but I think to, like, address, you know, the concern on, you know, there's going to be more traffic and all that stuff, I mean, that's just something we're going to have to work out. Right now, you know, the DOT, you know, is saying that if you put in these, like, improvements, then, you know, your development should safely, like, function. Now, again, that's, this is all on, like, paper and stuff like that, but, you know, we're still, you're still in the early, like, stages of working, you know, with them, so there's still things that are going to be developed over time, so. But, I mean, the other comment was, I mean, do you have any, I assume these are going to be market-rate apartments?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, market-rate apartments. They're not going to be government apartments. They're not affordable housing. I don't know if, I don't know if the planning board or the consultants. What? They won't be affordable, right, that's it, that's the problem.
I haven't seen anything that looks affordable.
Right. No, I don't know if the planning board or any of the consultants are familiar with our product. We have one in Poughkeepsie on the river. We're building fifty townhouses that, you know, on North Cross Road. These are, you know, they're not super high-end, because I don't, you know, Hyde Park couldn't afford, you know, the people that are ready to live in Hyde Park.
Be careful now, where you're going.
Well, we're trying to make them as affordable, affordable to attract the people that will live in Hyde Park. So, they're going to be nice apartments. They're going to be, they're quality stuff, and that's what we build. We don't build cheap stuff. And so, in fact, in Poughkeepsie, we're.
Recovery, Lou.
Right, thank you. In Poughkeepsie, we're actually, you know, we have a very quality product. We're actually lower than any of the comparable developments in our area. We're lower than them, which I told my manager to keep quiet so the owners don't find that out. But anyhow, it'll be affordable, but it'll be really nice, not whatever government apartments mean, no.
Okay, that's good. You addressed.
Oh, and, not that many threes.
Quit while you're ahead.
In a, in a eight, in a eight-building, in an eight-unit quad, we're going to have one, three, and the rest are twos and ones. So, you know, we're keeping threes to a minimum. So, that.
I thought you said trees at first.
Yeah. Well, I'm from Brooklyn.
Brooklyn. Thank you.
A tree grows in Brooklyn.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak about this application? With that said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Can I ask a question, just, because there's so many moving pieces here. So, the finding statement is the focus at this point. Can you please refresh my memory as to, like, how that fits into with next steps and?
Sure.
Because, again, there's so many things.
There are, and a lot of this had to do with the updates because of the changes, and for the most part, development's been reduced. But, what has happened through the process is that the wetlands and the turtles became a bigger issue, which then impacted other aspects of the project. And you had received a notice of incomplete application from DEC asking for certain things so that they would feel that they could issue a permit. Our concern is always, you know, jumping ahead in the event that it turns out the project has to change again, because there's not enough information. So, I think we're very close, as you said. The one item that Tad and Pete are going to review is the HECC-RAS, because that, it's not so much about, as much as it's about the floodplain and development within the floodplain, DEC is concerned about how it affects water levels and then the turtle habitat. So, that's why they're concerned about it. But, I think once we have that, you know, once you feel comfortable with it, then I think, you know, a lot of this can be wrapped up. Even with DOT, I think we can word it in a way that it's going to require the left-turn lane, you know, that you're not going to impact the wetland. We can write it in a way that I think it would be acceptable. So, once you do the amended finding statement, that closes the seeker process again, and then Lou can go and pursue the various permits he needs, because they can issue permits until the finding statement is adopted.
They also have a new rule in DEC, and that is, they don't issue one permit, and another permit, and another permit. They only issue one permit that has all the parts in it. So, I got to be, so the wetlands, and the turtles, and the bridges, and the, you know, all of that has to be acceptable to them, or they won't issue it. And one of the conditions is to have the board determine that the findings or revised findings encompass this project.
I think the other aspect of the project that we've been working with is, as you know, the zoning changed, and it affected potentially the density, so we've been treating this as if it's a mitigation plan, a revised plan. You're mitigating the old, so we don't open up potential issues with that change to the zoning that was made a long time ago. So, once they get their amended finding statement, you know, I guess there'll be a final engineering review, and then whatever approvals will be subject to getting the permits from the other agencies, so.
Extension.
Extension of, yeah, exactly.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you.
That's a great, great overview.
Thank you.
That's why you keep her at that table.
That's right, that's right.
Anything else, Hannah?
No.
So, with no one else here to speak about this from the public, can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing to?
What do you want, the third or the seventeenth?
January third or January seventeenth?
You know, I'm thinking we'll have it, that's me tonight, you know, and then when things slow down to molasses for five or six weeks. I'd do the third or this, either one.
You can come in for a workshop if you're ready before that for seeker. It's the public hearings on the extension request, if you're not ready for.
Okay. So, you tell me, the third? I mean, does that make sense to you?
I mean, I would think probably longer, because they can't.
Oh, he doesn't. I mean, I'm not building tomorrow, so, yeah.
You tell seeker's done, and then you get your permits.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, so does that mean the seventeenth?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Okay, so, a motion to adjourn the public hearing for Carriage Trails to January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved. And then if you get, if I need a second for.
Second.
Thank you.
I'll be at your door.
We can come in for seeker in December.
All in favor?
Aye.
In December.
Motion carries.
Actually, I'll be at Bonnie's door, because she's closer to my office.
It depends on, it depends on.
All right, next on the agenda is Jeffrey Groves Estates.
Hi, Louis Kaufman for the applicant, and I have Brian Watts from De Stokosa here to walk through the revised site plan with some changes on it, which have been requested by the board, and, you know, to correct certain things. Initially, we had a.
The one that's in the space of the room, hang on.
Okay, initially, we had a, an issue with some, you know, we had trespass on the neighbor, and we fixed that now. He actually sent a lovely email, which I told my people to send over, but they didn't, of course. So, he said, "Everything's good, and I'm very happy," and all these wonderful things, you know.
Congratulations.
Right. So, the bottle of scotch worked. Okay. Let me, do you want me to? I can have Brian testify, whatever way you want it. Has it?
Testify?
Yeah.
Testify.
Testify. Hold your hand.
Are you the judge, jury, or post?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, there were a bunch of revisions that were suggested by Mr. Sotero and Tad and the board, and those have been incorporated into the site plan, the revised site plan that you should have in front of you. So.
You should have it, too, in front of you.
Okay. Okay. So, just, if you'd like, I can just go through Pete's comments quickly. So, the drawing should be titled amended site plan, done. There are two details titled privacy fence, one is on concrete patio and curtain, and curtain drain. Please relabel, done. Label vinyl fence separating the units on the site plan, they've been relabeled. Curtain drain outlet should have stone outlet protection, please label the note size, C, stone detail, it's on your plan. The fence along the northern property line should be labeled as black chain link, expand the note to indicate the fence location, should be staked prior to, it's installed, so, and I believe that was acceptable.
It's installed already?
It's installed.
Okay.
You're not surprised, are you?
We didn't want to fall over you. That was the whole purpose, right?
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll come out, we'll come out and look at it. Cool.
The post and rail fence at the top of the slope east of the building should extend to the. to the chain link fence. It's been revised on the plan. We have several comments.
Was the post and rail fence installed? Yeah?
I don't think so.
Okay. Might as well while you're doing the other one.
It's probably doing it right now with a flashlight, I mean, I don't...
Right, I don't know, I, I'll have to take my horse out there.
Those turtles were...
They can get underneath, they're not allowed to use those. Okay, make sure the culvert location is per as-built conditions, not original design. Um, it's a location per as-built. Generator pad seems close to the culvert. Without grading it, is difficult to tell if the pad overhangs the slope. I believe the pad is already installed, please review in the field. So, it doesn't overhang, uh, the slope. Chain link fence should be black, okay. Uh, screening is noted, but what is the screen, is it shown on the original plan? Uh, there is some screening shown on the original plan, if so, should it be referenced? So we're going to add to this plan some screening, some, uh...
For the generator, right?
What? By the generator, right. So, with, it, it, there was screening from the generator to the units, to the, uh, townhouses. We're going to add some, uh, one, I think one or two on the roadway and a couple, you know, on, on both roadways. One on the roadway we're dedicating, and then one on, uh, the North Cross Road.
I brought the original amended, the original site plan that we approved that showed the, uh, when I'm referring to the screening, this is what we were talking about. They were showing the, um, just some evergreen trees on either side to try and shield, give a little, a little visual buffer from the end units and from anybody going along North Cross. We'll change that as we need to, but that's...
Well, it's rock there, isn't it, though?
The rock originally is up here, this large, that large rock outcropping.
Yeah, that you cut out for...
That has to be cut out for site distance.
Well, they did already, right?
Yes.
It's cut out. Okay.
Okay, um...
Maybe I can help here, Matt. So we did, we did, we did look at the plans. Cynthia went over them too, and I believe Cynthia sent, um, an email out with a couple, a couple things in. I think it was the gen... It was, oh. And then I had a, the only comment that I had, because I, because I believe you addressed all of, all of my comments, was that, um, the detail for the chain link fence said six-foot maximum, four-foot minimum, so, uh, we didn't know, you know...
Six feet.
Everything is six feet, even the one that's going to be at the bottom behind, like the units, at the bottom, bottom of, because you proposed one at the toe, at the toe of the slope behind, at the toe of the slope behind, uh, the units, right, Brian?
Yes, right here.
No, 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 that's the one, that's the one that's on, you know, the top of the slope.
That's the top.
That's the top.
That's the top, but then didn't you also propose one?
Right, right, right along the, the toe.
Okay, so what's that one going to be, six or four?
Six.
You're sure, it does sound like it.
I think six.
Okay, so, you know, the detail then should just be changed to just say six-foot period?
Yep.
Before we sign it.
I'll make that change, yep.
Okay. And what else, Cynthia? There was something else in the email, wasn't there?
Um, there was just a question about what this, the pad was expanded, so can that landscaping actually fit in that space? And is it, could, it's gone closer to that parking area, so will it, the two white signs that were supposed to be there, will they fit there?
I, I can move...
Barbara, did you want different landscaping as adequate from the original?
I'm okay with whatever the board deems appropriate, any species that they plan on.
The question in the first...
Can you even fit?
Yeah, is there space? It's not going to fit right here, we would end up just having to move this up and over a little bit. Originally, it was on the corner, so it'll just move up and out a little bit.
The tree, or...
The, the tree.
I have them, I'm moving the generator, believe me.
We can add another one right towards the front on the corner, in between the...
Yeah, maybe if you could add, uh, three, so there's three in total, to kind of soften that corner.
It's one here, two in the, two in the front, two in the corner, right here, right here, and then one in the front.
I'm thinking the one in the front, just make sure it doesn't block the access, or that the roots don't lift the concrete pad at all.
Okay.
I'm a little concerned of a, of a big pine tree in the front.
Would you prefer...
Chris, were you thinking three on the corner?
Far, yeah, farther to the...
Farther north, right up in there, all three up in there?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
That's fine?
Yeah.
Yeah, staggered.
Why don't you send up like a sketch, Brian, before you finalize the plan, and then Tad can, you know, look at it?
That's fine, absolutely.
Before you finalize the plan.
Doesn't look like soldiers.
If you want to...
Well, actually, actually, uh, so this, this is going to go to county, right, planning?
Yes, it has to.
So you should, you should do that, coordinate with Tad, get it on the plan before it gets sent to county planning, right? Because they always want to look at landscaping.
I can send it to you tomorrow morning, first thing.
Okay.
Wow, perfect.
Good.
Any, I mean, if, uh, we will still keep the, we could keep more trees down here, is that, anything else want to, I can add it, I mean, I'm not, we're not afraid to add some screening here, if you feel it's necessary.
I don't remember if there's a lot of room between the generator pad and the top of the slope.
I don't, I don't think there's a lot of space in there.
Before it slopes down into, you know, the stream there, I, I don't remember.
I mean, we could put some small, I'm just spending your money here, don't worry about it.
Thanks.
Um, I could put some box arborvitae or anything if, if you feel it's necessary. I don't want to be shy with it, if we're here.
I mean, it would be nice to have a little screening from, you know, the highway, but again, I don't know, I don't remember if you can fit it or not, but...
Yeah, it's screened by the, uh, electric boxes.
But they're green. I would be opposed with some arborvitae on that, on that end, so...
All right, so, yeah, why don't you just, why don't you just like include those, and then hopefully, hopefully they can fit?
That's fine, I'll move that along. Very good.
And I just want to make it clear that the sign is on a drainage easement, and that that's okay.
This is, yes, originally, we had one iteration where it was here.
Right.
Dutchess County wastewater has the easement for the pad. Uh, for this, um, pump station. This line, I don't know how to give her that yellow box, but, um, it does, this dash line, and then it goes to the right-of-way, all the way across here, back up, that was the stormwater. So, with the box culvert and everything is in that storm easement, and I moved the monument sign from the Dutchess County wastewater to the Towne High Parks to try to eliminate anybody else that's got to say yes or no.
Where it is, where it is there, I mean, the town would never have to be in that area to maintain anything, to maintain, the only like maintenance would be right at the end of the box culvert and, you know, the stone, so, you know, you know, the sign's not going to affect it. But I don't remember, so that's storm easement, and I, I guess I got to go back and look at the plans. I thought the Towne High Park just had a storm easement that covered the end, the end of the box culvert, and maybe like 10 or, 10 or 15 feet up the stream. I don't remember that we took an easement that went all the way up towards, you know, the pond. Isn't that, isn't that easement for, isn't that the easement for...
It has the eas...
You know, the homeowner that owns, you know, the pond or something, because there's a drain, because there's a drain there for the pond in that area?
There, yes, there's, the pond drain is existing, and it, um, that's why the easement was there, so the town or whomever, I suppose, if they had to get in there to drain that pond, um...
It's not a town, this one goes from North Cross to the homeowners.
Right, that's what I thought.
Homeowners.
The homeowner of...
Right.
The homeowner, the homeowner of the...
Association, or association.
Of the association?
Yeah, homeowners association.
Oh, okay.
Oh, maybe I, uh, I may have misspoke? There was probably a yellow box blocking my vision there, and I missed it.
All right, well, all right, well, um, actually, I had planned like to look at that, I just didn't, I didn't finish it yet. But I do remember that we had, we had an easement around the end of the box culvert, and that the rest of it heading up towards the pond was somebody else's, which, you know, we're saying, we're saying is the HOA, which is fine.
That's what the plans say.
Well...
That's what we're going to go with, then.
I would assume that the legal docu, well, I hate that when we do that, but we would assume the legal documents that they've already been filed, that that include, that that's correct.
Right, on the plans, yeah.
They're recorded.
Right, they're already recorded.
And originally, Victoria's partner looked at them, then Warren Ruplansky looked at them, now I have Kyle Barnett looking at them. Anybody else want to look at them, if you're available?
Well, it's all the paddles.
I'd like to look at them.
Oh, the new ones.
Well, in any event, though, I, I think everyone's okay with the monument sign being depicted there, at least? Yeah, I think so, for this, so...
Homeowners Association? You're okay with the sign?
We're good.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right, that's in the, so that's in the homeowners' association easement. Oh, then we don't, I mean, I don't care.
We'll have to have a permit, and we'll have to have some kind of drawing shown to us, but I'm sure we'll be fine with it.
Ms. Francis, anything else to add?
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Anything else, Pete?
No.
Ms. Moss, nothing? Ms. Folodoro?
Um, just because it's an amendment, we need to refer to county planning, and we have a letter from Tad to waive a public hearing if we feel true.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
Nothing.
Nothing? Ms. Dexter?
Nothing.
Mr. Gercio?
No, no comment.
And I also have no comments, other than the brief comment about the landscaping, and I would like a motion to waive the public hearing for the Jeffrey Groves Estates site plan amendment, as recommended by the zoning administrator.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Yep.
And I would also like to make a motion to refer the Jeffrey Groves Estates site plan amendment application to the Dutchess County Planning and Development, per section 239m.
Once the amended plan is received.
Yeah, once...
As amended.
As amended.
We'll have that to you by the end of the week.
So moved.
Tomorrow morning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's true.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Yes, enjoy, thanks for having me.
Enjoy.
Did you say happy hunting? Because those turtles are safe.
Not with me.
Bring them, bring them here.
Next on the agenda is Stewart Shops 9G.
I have one, I have a turtle on my desk, with a little yellow hat.
What's, what's his name?
Construction hat?
Let me name it.
Oh, you didn't name it?
Name it.
Spunky?
No. No.
Speedy, how about speedy?
There you go.
Yeah, that's a good one, thank you. No, you know Taco Bell.
Truffle, truffle.
Thank you very much.
Truffles for turtles.
Truffles, truffles, I like truffles.
Who doesn't?
Bye now.
Take care, Lou.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Steve Licardi, uh, project manager with Stewart Shops. Um, we are proposing an upgrade... We're proposing an exterior upgrade to our 1115 Route 9G shop.
Okay.
With siding, with siding and faux stone.
It's currently painted, right?
Yes, it's, um, it's currently painted, uh, painted brick.
Started out regular brick, and then you guys came and painted it.
Exactly, exactly.
Is there any, uh, reason you're looking to go this route, instead of the, maintaining the brick?
Um, these are the same finishes that are on our new stores, um, and I mean, in all honesty, the, the brick is pretty tired at this point. Um, it's a pretty relatively cheap, um, easy upgrade, so that's, that's really the, the reason why.
All right, thank you. Any comments from our consultants?
So I'm the only one on this one, because it's minor. It does need to go to county planning, we have a resolution prepared for that, I need to type it, um, I have it classified as a type-two action, because it's a minor repair to the exterior of the structure.
Thank you.
And we can set a public hearing on that.
We can set a public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Waters, any comments?
Yeah, I just had a, a couple of questions. Isn't, it's the siding to be applied, it's going to be applied over the brick, correct?
Yes.
So it's going to be furred?
Yeah, I have a couple, uh, progression pictures here.
Okay. I was just wondering what happens with the windows, how are you going to handle that?
Yep, so we, we basically fur it out.
Yep.
Standard, you know, framing material, and then hopefully these are in order, they are not. So there's the sheathing over top of the framing, um, and you can see the, the window returns, they're just, um, with AZAC PVC.
Okay, okay.
Oh, okay.
And that's partially finished.
Okay. And then I was just wondering the color of the stone.
Mm-hmm. Um, this is actually the product, um, it's...
Is it a gray?
It's a gray, yeah.
It is a gray, because I think on the drawing, it looked...
It was brown. Brown in, uh, that was just the construction documents, yeah.
Yeah, we've had people do that, and it doesn't...
Yeah, no.
Match the town.
This is, this is the actual...
Yeah, okay, all right.
Oh, good, thank you.
Yeah, it's softer, it's nice.
It's called Hyde Park gray.
Yes, Hyde Park gray.
It should be.
If you would like, sure.
Okay, so...
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so those were the questions I had.
Okay.
Thank you, Rob. Ms. Dexter, any comments?
Um, are there any changes to the signage or the lighting? Are there any changes to the signage or the lighting?
There is not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gercio, any questions?
Looks better. Dexter was there when I was a kid.
Yeah.
Oh, it looks good, I have no comments.
And my only comment would be, thank you for trying to improve, you know, your business in Hyde Park, and I'm happy to hear about the stone being gray.
Yeah.
The brown wasn't Hyde Park-ish. But that's all from me, so thank you.
Okay, good.
We have a resolution tonight to type the action, and I think John has that?
Yes. Stewart Shop, East Park, Resolution 2023-66. Whereas the applicant, Stewart Shops Corp, has submitted application for site plan amendment approval to alter the exterior facade of the existing structured shop located at 1115 New York State Route 9G, Hyde Park, New York. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby classifies the project as a type 2 action under SEAKER. Directs its secretary to defer the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239-m of the general municipal law.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I would also like to make a motion, someone to make a motion to set the public hearing for Stewart Shops 9G site plan for December 6th, 2023.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. I have a building permit, spoke with Barbara yesterday, she mentioned we did downstairs.
You have, you have to.
Oh, what?
Building permit?
Was going to be left downstairs? They don't trust you.
Sorry.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Palladino ground-mounted photovoltaic panels.
Okie dokie. So we're looking to install two ground-mounted solar panels at this property, each containing 32 panels, instead of one extra-large array.
Any comments from Victoria?
Again, the panels are permitted use in the district. Last time, we've had a few of these now before you, the big issue really is screening from the neighbors for these panels, you should take a look at that. Yes, you should decide if you want to do a site walk so you can see the location of the panels. And then I do have a resolution to type the action as type 2.
Good, thank you. Ms. Moss, any comments?
Set a hearing.
I would like you to look closely at screening. And possibly that the neighboring parcel is vacant and is also owned in the same ownership as this property, I believe. But screening is required on parcel where the structures are.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Waters, any questions, comments?
Yeah, my comment would be about the screening, just to make sure there's adequate screening.
That was proposed on our plans. I know that we had gotten some feedback on it to just be a little bit more specific. So that, we sent all the notes over to the engineer already. We do have a question on one of them, though. There is no topographical survey for this property. The original land surveyor who did it passed away in 2021. The place that he worked for is no longer, they have a phone number, they have a voicemail, they haven't called us back for days, so I went to the location that's listed on Google because it's right by me, and they're not there anymore.
What, who was this surveyor?
It was. Brian Franks.
Yeah, Brian Franks, I mean, you can get, you can talk to your engineer, but you can get topo off of GIS, it's called LiDAR.
So I guess he couldn't pull it off of there, they didn't?
Because, I mean, we've used that on small, like, projects.
No, I know, we've used it in the past.
And it's accurate.
But I guess this property, for some reason, he wasn't able to grab it. I can have him double-check, I didn't, I didn't try to do it.
I thought you could get that anywhere, but.
No, we've had the issue in the past. Yeah, unfortunately. It's only probably the third one we've had the issue with, but.
There isn't anything, because I think I called this up on parcel access and I turned on the terrain model.
Okay.
And it showed, it showed contours, because when we looked at it here, I was asked to just take a look at it to see if there was any potential for erosion issues, and I think I called up the contours on Dutchess County Parcel Access, so. I mean, you got to be able to try to get something off of, you know, like GIS sets approximate, should be able to somewheres.
I'll have him look again.
And he can contact our engineer, Pete Sotero, and they can talk about it.
Okay.
I can give you a card before you leave.
Okay, perfect.
Doesn't, you know, the fire departments usually go look at these, do we have them?
We generally don't refer the fire department.
Or maybe it's Don, because there's some kind of, you know, like a disconnect or something on the house that.
Yeah, we put a disconnect switch. Normally, we try to do it next to the meter or wherever the shut-off switch is for the service panel.
Yeah.
But it's always on the outside.
I think that's all covered when they apply for a building permit, right?
And you did put signage and stuff on the planning sets.
There's no, nothing in the notes.
And they'll go on all the equipment as well.
We should give elevation.
Yeah. So, I'm looking at the, is this your proposed screening right here, the dots?
The green tree, the green dots, yes.
What did, what did you propose, I didn't see a note in there?
10 green giants, eight foot on center. Which, yeah, we got the feedback for the, to be more specific, they're, I believe, four feet apart. So that will be on the revisions that we send in.
What's a green giant?
So arborvitae.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would like to.
I believe we pulled that from your code, that's why we picked those ones, so.
I'd like to see like a mixture of some spruce and white pine in a stagger.
White pine.
So they're going to be a little more substantial?
Have different heights?
Yeah, and.
They grow, but they take their time growing.
The deer eat them.
Green giant are deer resistant.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's why we usually pick those kinds.
Yeah, the arborvitae, deer are going to eat arborvitae. Yeah, they want a green giant, but. You're, you're okay with just a few? I just think white pine would be more substantial.
Should we do a site?
They get rather large.
So then how do I, how do I do this? Oh, it's just the, okay.
Yeah, so you guys, you might want to do a site walk and then.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. That's what I think we need to.
I think a site walk would be best to.
And you could, you know, somebody could stake out where these are actually going to be located or something, or mark them somehow.
Okay.
So that we could see.
Yeah, just like little stakes with tape or something.
Tape or something, so.
Just the trees or?
And the panels.
Where the panels.
And the panels, okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure before we go out there.
Yep.
What date would, would work for you?
Anytime next week, we can get it done sometime this week.
Next week is Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Oh, I knew that. Early next week? I'll have to ask the customer on that one.
I'm thinking probably the following week, there's three weeks between meetings this time, so the week after next might be better.
Would it be easier if you talked to your client and then circulated an email with a couple of dates that work and see which?
Does the client have to be home for the site walk?
That's their discretion.
As long as we're allowed on the property. As long as there's somebody there that represent him, yourself.
Okay, so we have to be there for the site walk?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, somebody should be there.
Some towns are different.
You do the owner or the owner rep.
Okay, so we can get the stakes in the ground by early next week, so anytime after that, I'll be there for the site walk. Customer might want to be there as well, but most likely, my boss is going to want somebody from the company there if we're, if they want something, so.
So we'll circulate an email, Cynthia, you can.
Well, why don't you find out, you know, the customer wants to be there, blah, 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 and then you.
Yeah, what works for them.
Then you get back to the town with some dates and then.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
We'll narrow it down.
Very good, and I believe, Rob, you have a resolution typing the action?
Yes, resolution classifying the action under SEAKER. Palladino ground-mounted solar, Resolution 2023-61. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type 2 action under SEAKER.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looking for more, too.
I know, it's like, that's it?
Okay. Other business is going.
Oh, right, oh, that's at the top, yep, sorry.
I'd like a motion to set the public hearing for December 6th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
You said December 2nd, right?
December 6th.
6th.
Oh, sorry. Okay, got it.
Very good.
Yeah, there's three weeks between now and then, so we should be able to get a site walk in there at some point.
Got it. Now, just to clarify, you guys send the list of people, or do I have to?
A public hearing, we take her.
Okay, gotcha, all right.
Notifying.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Verizon Wireless Tower.
Here's my card, too, if you want to give it to your people.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Scott Olson for Verizon Wireless. I think you have everything that has been asked for, revised plans, showing what we're doing with the rock wall, the boulders, the gate. The RF, I believe, has been confirmed by your consultant and ours. Trying to think of what else. I don't think there's anything outstanding, I think we have responded to each and every comment.
Thank you. Ms. Palladaro, any comments?
Guidance.
Guidance?
The board received a lot of comments on this project, but you also did a lot of diligence. You had a visual assessment, you had a third-party RF engineer who did an analysis and determined that there were no other feasible alternate locations that were available to the applicant, and that there was a need for this tower in this location. Public hearing's been closed, so tonight, what you're left with is reviewing parts 2 and 3 of the EAF, deciding if you're ready to make a SEAKER determination, and then you can decide to consider the resolution to approve the project.
Thank you. Ms. Franson, any comments?
Just that you have the part 2 and 3 in front of you, and looking at the part 2, so this was an unlisted action, so we filled out the short environmental assessment form, parts 2 and 3. And really, throughout the whole process, I think it came down to visuals, especially potential impact on historic, given the fact that Val Kil and FDR are about half a mile, a mile away from where this tower would be, as well as Blandings, because that popped up as well. So the parts, there's a little part 3 or description of how you assess that. The applicant has certain notes on the site plan with regard to the Blandings turtle, and then, of course, we did an extensive visual assessment analysis, and really, it's mostly visible from St. Andrews Road, the neighborhood to the north, and then a little bit on 9G. So that was it, and I think if you agree, you would be ready to issue a negative declaration on that basis.
Thank you. Ms. Sotero?
Nothing.
Ms. Moss? Okay. Mr. Waters?
Nothing.
Ms. Dexter?
No, nothing additional.
Mr. Gercio?
No, nothing.
Okay. With that said, we will consider, should I go through the short form?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, part 2.
Prior, correct?
Yes, please.
All right, I'm going to go through the short form of the environmental assessment form. So, part 2, 1, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No, or small impact may occur. 2, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or the intensity of use of land? No, or small impact may occur. 3, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No, or small impact may occur. 4, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No, or small impact may occur. 5, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No, or small impact may occur. 6, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. 7, will the proposed action impact existing, A, public or private water supplies, or B, public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No. 8, will the proposed action impair the character, quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Moderate to large impact may occur. 9, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, example wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? Moderate to large impact may occur. 10, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. 11, will the proposed action create a hazard or environmental resource? 2, environmental resources or human health? No. Should I go through part 3?
Yes.
Okay. Read the whole thing?
I mean, you don't need to read all the, if you can just read.
Just the one, two.
Yeah, just the narrative.
Okay. The impact to historic or aesthetic resources, the proposed project is within 1 to 5 miles of significant historic buildings and properties, some of which are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Among the various resources that could be impacted, the telecommunications facility would be within .5 miles of the Eleanor Roosevelt National Historic Site and within 1 mile of the home of Franklin, the Eleanor Roosevelt Historic, National Historic Site. In November 2022, the applicant, in consultation with the planning board, identified some 44 sites from which the telecommunications facility may be visible. Based on the review of the computer-generated viewshed maps, the applicant caused a visual assessment to be prepared, which evaluated whether the facility would be visible from any vantage point. This was done by installing a weather balloon at the height of the proposed tower and determining whether same, determining whether same was visible from any vantage point. The visual resource evaluation, tectonic engineering dated February 2023, concluded that the 150-foot monopole would be visible for, only from vantage points in close proximity to the project site, St. Andrews Road, places along 9G, and a neighborhood located to the north of the site, and not from any historic or significant aesthetic resources.
That should be south.
It was the south.
Okay, I'll change that to the south of the site, and not from any historic or significant aesthetic resources. No significant adverse impacts are anticipated. Further, the planning board did require that the applicant explore alternative sites on which to co-locate the tower, but no such sites were determined feasible. 2, the impact to flora and fauna as part of the FEAF Part 1 review, it was determined that the proposed facility would be constructed in close proximity or within habitat for the Blandings turtle, a New York State-listed threatened species. The applicant has consulted with the New York State DEC to determine whether the proposed project would have significant adverse impact on the species or its habitat. Based on a site reconnaissance, the Blandings turtle was not found on the site as per a letter dated September 15th, 2023, and at the request of the New York State DEC, the following measures are being incorporated in order to ensure impacts will not result. Provide a wetland delineation of the vicinity wetlands specifically investigated on the 330-foot area around the proposed limits of disturbance. Apply a seasonal restriction for construction, including demolition and reclamation, which limits work to the Blandings turtle in active season, between October 16th and April 14th. Adhere to the New York State's DEC, New York State DEC's guideline for gate clearance heights, this is on the construction drawings, implement erosion control measures, adopt education and encounter plan for the operational phase. These have been incorporated into the site drawings, no adverse impacts are anticipated. So that would conclude the short form EAF and.
Now you can go to the resolution. You've incorporated the approval of that form.
Very good. Resolution to adopt a negative declaration and grant site plan and special permit approval of Verizon Cell Tower, St. Andrews, Resolution Number 2022-52A. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby makes the following findings pursuant to Section 108-8.4 of the zoning law. 1, the project is consistent with the purposes of the zoning law and with the applicable sections of Articles 4 and 5 of the zoning law and has been given due consideration by the planning board. The tower is a permitted use in the zoning district. The planning board has considered its proposed location, which will be on the interior of a wooded lot and which will not have a community-wide visual impact. A purpose of the zoning law is to facilitate the provision of infrastructure to meet public needs. 2, the project will not result in excessive off-premise noise, dust, odor, solid waste, or glare, or create any public or private nuisances. The project involves the installation of telecommunications equipment on a new monopole in approximately the center of a 7.82 acre parcel. The tower will not be lit at night, and facility lights will only be used when there is a person at the facility during evening hours. is a person at the facility during evening hours. There will be no off-premise noise, dust, solid waste, or glare. Three, the project will not cause significant traffic congestion, impair pedestrian safety, or overload existing roads. The facility will be unmanned, and after construction will generate only one to three additional vehicle trips per year for routine maintenance. Four, the project is suitable, given the property's size, location, topography, vegetation, soils, natural habitat, hydrology, hydrogeology, and its ability to be screened from neighboring properties and public roads. The applicant has prepared a visual resource evaluation, which shows that the proposed project will be substantially screened due to existing vegetation and topography. The planning board acknowledges that some neighboring properties will see the tower, but this is unavoidable. The planning board has reviewed the potential for visual screening, such as a pine tree, but has determined that this type of camouflage would draw the eye to the tower, and that the silver-gray treatment of the tower would be better blended into the sky. Five, the project will be subject to such conditions on operation, design, and layout of structures and provision of buffer areas as may be necessary to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses and to protect the natural, historic, and scenic resource of the town. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby determines that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Be it further resolved, the planning board hereby grants special use permit approval and approves the site plan set and authorizes the chair or his authorized as need to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, submission of a fully executed lease amendment with the town board limiting the height of the tower to 150 feet. Three, approval by the attorney to the planning board and the attorney to the town of an agreement committing the owner of the telecommunications tower and its successors in interest to negotiate in good faith for shared use of said tower by other providers of telecommunications in the future in accordance with Section 101-6 of the Town Code. Four, approval by the town attorney of the communications facilities removal agreement required by Section 101-17 of the Town Code. The removal agreement shall be executed by both the applicant and the landowner. As part of this agreement, the town board may require an undertaking and a continuing letter of credit or other financial security covering the project projected cost of dismantling and removal as recommended by the town engineer. Five, filing with the town clerk evidence of liability insurance in accordance with Section 101-20 of the Town Code. Six, issuance of a Town of Hyde Park erosion and sediment control permit or stormwater pollution prevention plan as determined necessary by the town's stormwater management officer. Seven, issuance of a construction access permit and a commercial access permit from the Dutchess County Department of Public Works, or a letter from DC DEPW indicating that no permit is needed for the project. Be it further resolved that it shall be an ongoing condition of the site plan and special use permit approval, that by December 31 each year, after the tower is constructed, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator with the following pursuant to Town Code 101-7E. One, evidence that all licenses and agreements are current and in effect. Two, evidence that the tower has been inspected for safety by a qualified building inspector. Three, a written statement affirming that the antenna is active and intended use is to continue throughout the upcoming year. Four, a written statement that the applicant is in the compliance with FCC maximum permissible exposure limits, and if the applicant files an environmental assessment to the FCC due to noncompliance, a copy shall be sent to the zoning administrator. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wow. Yeah, yeah. Motion carries, congratulations.
All right, thank you very much for your time and effort, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Happy holiday.
Yeah.
And to you.
Thanksgiving.
Yes, I can't believe it's there, here already.
It's early this year.
That's why it seems, seems that way. Thank you, have a nice night.
You too.
Do we have something else on the agenda?
Yes, we do.
No. Nothing listed.
You said adjournment? Next on the agenda is CIA Hotel and Villas. Welcome.
Good to be here. I think we're here tonight, well, first of all, Michael Zarin, Zarin Steinmetz, thank you for putting us on the agenda for tonight. I think we're on tonight just for a, hopefully, proposed SEACRA determination on the temporary trailer. And I guess on December 6th, we'll go back into issues on the application and get feedback on our November 2nd submission.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Franzen, any comments?
I don't, we talked about SEACRA, and Victoria's addressed it, so we're good.
Okay. Pete, any comments?
No.
Ms. Paula Dora?
I think it'd be helpful if the board members that went on the site walk each talked about their observations and not them on the record. But other than that, now that I've given you my opinion on the secret segmentation issue, there is authority to do it if you find it's a proper case.
Thank you. Ms. Moss, any comments?
No.
Sorry.
That was, that was a hesitant, no.
We'll see how the discussion goes.
Okay. Mr. Waters?
Yeah, well, the, thank you for the site, site walk visit, that was very informative. There was a path that we followed, so that was good. Got home, had a couple ticks on me, but that was no problem. Yep, yep. But other than that, the site, the site was really, it's, it's, it's a beautiful site, has a lot of potential for just, just being a great, I think, a great project. Tight, tightly compacted, everything's tightly compacted. And just overall, I saw where the trailer was going, the positioning of the trailer and all, and just, you know, thank you for answering all our questions, too, during the site walk. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Rob. Ms. Dexter, any comments?
I would echo thanking you for taking us around twice, not just once, but twice, for the late arrivals. Now, that was the third time I've been on that property, I've never accessed it from the south across that pedestrian bridge, and so it was, it was like a completely different site for me. The existing trails obviously go back decades, and I liked, I really enjoyed that you could, you could look at the map and the, whatever that application was, would put a dot and say, you're right here on, on the site plan, and that we could then see, like, the Winnicke areas, we could see the scenic Hudson easements, we could see how everything was going to sit. We talked about joining the trail systems from the south to the north, the, your work that's needed with the FDR estate, but I'm sure that they will be happy to, to work on that, because they're, they love their trails. All in all, it was, it really helped me to meld your site plan into the site. Prior to that, it had been kind of difficult for me to actually see it. And then also understanding the one spot where the, the not distillery, the tasting room? The tasting room, right? That, that's kind of a focal point, that's kind of right in the center, and how you're going to, how that, how you're working within the topography was very interesting, and it seemed to make sense. Everybody else was talking about blowing up the big rock that was there, and you're gonna work with the rock, which I think is gonna make a lot more sense. So, it was just, it was a beautiful day, it really helped me to understand, and to have that trailer where it is with the pedestrian bridge. At first, I was a little worried about the pedestrian bridge, but it looks, it looks modern, it, it, it looked stable, it did not give me the heebie-jeebies, as I thought it might. So, it seems all set up, that if you have a sales trail, trailer, and you were to go across, and you have an area where your ATV can be parked, with the trail access the way it is, I can see that this could be a functional use at this point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Matt. Mr. Garcia?
I didn't go on the site walk, but I've been back there.
You were at one of them, right? We're in there in the July?
Yeah, we, we've run the entire property, I just didn't come from the pedestrian bridge, but I've seen the pedestrian bridge before, and
Oh, okay.
And, you know, I mean, I think it's a great project. It makes sense to put the trailer where it's, where you want to put it, so I'm okay with it.
Thanks.
Thank you, John. And that was my first time to the site, and I really appreciate it, being able to do the site walk, and it, it's a very unique site, beautiful site, and with all the different constraints that you have between topography, the rock, scenic Hudson, Winnicke, you're really trying to fit everything in there, so I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing, and, you know, I, I don't have any issues with the, the trailer, the location, the use of the pedestrian bridge, and the trails were very accessible, and I don't see the need for any other clearing or anything to be able to bring people to the site to show them. So, thank you.
Thanks. I believe we have a resolution.
Did Ted have any comments after our comments?
Ooh, good call.
We're only talking about the segmentation and the SEACRA right now, we're not talking about the site plan, so
Correct, correct.
Correct. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good, good catch, Ann.
Yes, this is a resolution to seg, to segment review of sales trailer from hotel project and classify the action as a Type II SEACRA action for the CIA Hotel and Villas temporary sales trailer. Resolution Number 2019-39A? Whereas, whereas, whereas? Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board finds that permissively segmenting the sales trailer application from the lodging facility project is no less protective of the environment as the planning board has taken a hard look at the potential environmental effects of the sales trailer application, is continuing and undertaking a full environmental review of the remainder of the lodging facility project, and that approving said sales trailer application does not in any way commit the planning board to any final determination on the overall lodging facility project, and by this resolution makes no representations with respect here thereto. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby, one, permissively segments the sales trailer application from the remainder of the lodging facility project; two, classifies the sales trailer application as a Type II SEACRA, Type II action under SEACRA, such that no further environmental review is required, and further determines that even if a determination, determination of environmental significance was required under SEACRA, the sales trailer application would not result in any significant adverse impacts to the environment. Be it further resolved that this resolution does not authorize removal of any trees or brush, and that no trees or brush shall be removed while the review of the lodging facility project is pending. Be it further resolved that this determination in no way commits the planning board to approve the lodging facility project, and the applicant has taken on the risk that any pre-sales will need to be returned if the lodging facility project is not approved or is significantly amended as a result of the planning board's continued review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully that sales trailer helps you get off the ground.
Definitely will help.
Pre-sale, pre-sales, sorry.
Do we, assuming, sorry, one of the things I was wondering, if, we have ZBA tomorrow, so Cindy, maybe if you can make sure they, they see it, I don't know. Okay, thank you.
They're aware of that.
Do we need to, assume they do grant the variance, we have to come back to the planning board?
Come back to the site plan just for the sales, for that, the site plan that you submitted.
Do we have to schedule a public hearing? Are we gonna have to have a public hearing just on this?
It depends. Yes. Yes.
Should we?
It does need to go to county as well.
Should we schedule the public hearing tonight for the 6th?
We'll have to prepare for that. May I suggest that you move the shelter for the ATV out of the 100-foot setback, so that you don't need a variance for that as well?
It is.
It is.
It's just the lines, honey.
Because it, the one I had was in, so as long as it's out.
Okay, we'll make sure, we had planned that, thanks, Ann. That was, that was definitely supposed to
This is, this is the buffer here, this is the 100 feet. Oh.
Maybe it's on the inside of the line. It's on the inside of the line.
You're showing it inside the 100-foot buffer.
We'll make sure it's on that other side, please make that correction, Dave. It was supposed to be put on the other side of that line.
There are a lot of lines.
There's a lot of lines.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's, it's in it, though.
We'll, we'll have that tomorrow morning, we'll be here. It's supposed to be on the other side.
So, do you, do you want to refer to county planning once they update?
And they'll show us the
We're asking if the board would want to refer this to county planning tonight on the, you know, to be circulated as soon as they amend it, to remove it from the 100-foot buffer.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah.
So, we can do that by motion.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I get a motion to circulate to Dutchess County Planning once the amendment, amended site plan has come in?
I'll make that.
So moved?
All in favor?
Ross, a motion?
Yeah.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Very good, and would like to make a motion to set the public hearing for December 6th?
So moved? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Happy holiday.
Yes, thank you.
Enjoy, be safe.
So, we did have a
There was an issue regarding a ready to publish
What?
Well, we set a public hearing, just so you guys know, someone had to write a public hearing notice, and we got them out, the next So, just like, I'm sure
It's gonna die anywhere than anybody else.
I mean, we, we can amend it right now and put the public
That's fine, we'll just, we'll just figure it out.
Well, there's like two neighbors, right?
Well, it's, no, it's the whole property.
Yeah. Oh, CIA, it's not that many people, it's just the writing of the document.
No, understood, I'm sorry.
So, do you want to change it?
We're going through this, the plan?
To, yeah.
Cynthia, do you want to change it?
Sorry.
Are you sure?
For the 20th?
Yeah, let's face, still write it.
Well, we have to wait, we have to wait for county planning to
They need variance, but also
It's a
Let's, let's change it.
Yeah.
Then move the other trail, wait, Michael.
Yeah, we, we have to change the public hearing. Because of the timing, send out all the notices.
We're going to ZBA tomorrow.
So, it would, when's the second meeting?
They weren't planning on it?
December 20th.
Also, county planning has 30 days from when you get it in, so
And it will be the second time they see it, if they have a
This will give Cynthia just a
Fraction of the time.
Public hearing will be at 20.
And county
Want a motion to amend?
Yes, yes. Like a motion to amend the
Previously.
Previously date for the public hearing from December 6th to December 20th.
So moved. So good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. December 20th, thank you. Anything else, you guys are good?
Sorry, Cynthia.
But we're still, we're still up to me, what's the question?
Did you, did you want to?
So, real quick, we did have another item on the agenda for tonight, was Hyde Park, Town Center North, Ready Coffee, but we are unable to Town Center North, Ready Coffee, but we are unable to review this because we would need a super majority to take a vote on this, and we don't have that tonight. So unfortunately, they're not here, and if needed, we may be able to do a special meeting, but we'll see how that goes.
And we hope that our colleagues feel better.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Tony.